Good evening all. I'd like to welcome you to the Village Council Meeting on Monday, August 9th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milosz Walton, present.
Commissioner Polk?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Commissioner Pavlatis? Mayor Mahoney?
Here, thank you. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You have your packets this evening. Drafted minutes from our previous meeting, July 12th. Any questions, comments, or suggested changes? Otherwise, I would see a motion to approve the minutes. So move.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Milosz Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Recognition, populations, appointments, presentations. Item A to proclaim September 6th, 2021 to September 12th, 2021, National Payroll Week. National Payroll Week celebrates America's employees and payroll professionals. Professionals pay them together through payroll. The toll will contribute, collect, report, and deposit 70% of the rest of the year's annual revenue, about $2.42 per year. Consent agenda. All items under consent agenda are routine or been brought forward in the direction of the Board of Commissioners. It will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be approved with consent agenda and considered separately. Item A to approve the proposal for the amount of $10,002.30 to replace the sanitary force made under Ramsgate Drive. Item B to rectify the payment invoices on the warrant stated July 26, 2021, in the amount of $7,133.30. Item C to approve payment on invoices on the warrant stated August 9, 2021, in the amount of $109,140.43. Item D to approve the supplemental warrant stated August 9, 2021, for manual checks, payroll, and the current level of insurance, in the amount of $333,000.78. Do I have a motion to approve the consent? So move.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Milosz Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Items old business to be brought forward at this time. Hearing, no, none. I'm going to move to Board Commission Committee Recommendations. We have an item to approve ordinance 2021-25. I do not know. Commissioner Reed, were you planning?
Yes, thanks for that. I was going to handle this if you don't mind.
No, that's great.
Okay, thank you. What we have before you this evening is a matter that was brought before the ZBA, a matter made in application filed requesting a variation from the requirements of Section 1268.068 in Office 7 to allow for accessory building, in this case, an attached garage, to be constructed beyond the front building line, the principal building at the property commonly known as 7833 West 123rd Place in Payless Park. The ZBA had a public hearing regarding an application, the matter that's before you remember, has been spoke with a public hearing, basically we had a regular shaped lot. It's on the corner at McCarthy and 123rd Place. Typically, we do not allow for accessory structure to be constructed beyond the front line of building of the building, the main building line. In this instance, there is no other place for the accessory building at the attached garage to go. The zone of the staff recommended and the zone of the board agreed that at this instance, the hardship outweighed the application of our code. The ZBA therefore addressed the recommendation that ordinance 20-21-25 be approved and barred to making a formal motion unless there are any comments that anyone has. Hearing none, I make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-25, a warrant approving an accessory for consideration to allow construction of detached garage at 7833 West 123rd Street. And once again, what we are doing is simply adopting the recommendation of the ZBA, and I would seek a second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Is there any other comment? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Milosz Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Information and updates. Public Works' reports, regulation report. Commissioner Milosz Walton.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have two items on the agenda, and one is very exciting. At our May 24th Village Council Meeting, Public Works asked to receive approval to go out for bid for our 2021 paving program, which falls under our 2022 MFT program. On August 4th, the bids were received, and the results are here. Lindell Brothers came in at $728,235. M&amp;J Asphalt, $838,525. And K5, $790,297. The low bidder with Lindell Brothers of Chicago Ridge, formerly Crowley Shepherd. Their bid of $728,235 was under the engineer's estimate of $921,000. IDOT will not allow any bid item to run more than 10% over contract quantities. As such, Public Works is asking approval to award the MFT contract to Lindell Brothers in the amount of $728,235 to give the village engineer approval to increase the quantities to the maximum allowed by IDOT with the contract amount not to exceed $800,000. And for anybody who wasn't around for the last meeting, we have been squirreling away some money and getting ready for a big project, because the bigger the project, the better pricing we can get. And the pricing came in a lot lower than expected. And we're able to get a good chunk of, you know, our troubled roads repaired. So, any other questions?
This represents the most significant local road project that we've had.
Since the eighties.
Before, so.
We have an idea about what kind of mileage in terms of paving this is going to be able to cover. Mike? Someone's going to ask me, Mike.
Do you have the listed streets?
I can tell you which streets we will be touching on. I can give you like the parameters, but if you're on these streets, you kind of know which sections are really bad. 113th Avenue, 114th Avenue, 115th Avenue, 116th Avenue, 123rd Place, Ramsgate/Oak Lane, Wild Cherry, Kinbora, Windsor, Somerset, South Woodland Trail, and Timber Lane. And some of these I do drive through myself with regularity, and they are in need. And we have determined, based on a bunch of different parameters, our director determines which streets are most desperately in need, and we start with those. So that's where we're at.
Is there an objection? Someone to put that up on the website with the explanation that this is just general information?
We could probably do that, but we could also then, you know, be a little more specific once we have the exact parameters when we know. But yeah, we can definitely put that up.
Thank you.
Yep. Questions?
I do have a, I do have a question.
Sure.
And it's kind of tangentially related to what we're talking about today. Because I could ask the questions all the time, and I'll put you on the spot. Any idea when I get the results of the engineering study that was conducted, was being conducted for the Dallas? And you don't have that to tonight, it's kind of thrown out there.
Yeah, Mike will get me that info there, and I can definitely let you know when we will have an idea. He's coming up to the podium, he can't see that.
Hancock has basically finished the initial phase of it. We met, discussed what type of stormwater we would like to have put in there to control the water before we pave it. They should have a plan based on about a week of preliminary plan that we can use to start getting estimates of what the cost would be.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, David. You know, we get other questions all the time. Definitely, I'm just kind of following up and making sure that we stay on the way, actually. That's all I got. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, and thank you, Mike, for that update. I'd like to make a motion to award the 2022 MFT project to Lindell Brothers in the amount of $728,235. And to give the village engineer the authority to increase the project quantities to the maximum, IDOT will allow with the contract amount not to exceed $800,000.
I'm happy to second, but I have a clarification, because on my agenda, it says 728-285.
And we don't check.
I just don't want, don't want to deprive you of the 50 bucks difference.
Well, it does, oh, under over 20. It does show 285 on that. Yeah, thank you, thank you. It does show 728-285.
Second.
Thank you.
Yes, the motions can be corrected to read 285.
Correct.
Second. Hearing a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milosz Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you.
Next item will be regarding our water main system leak survey. The Illinois Department of Natural Resources rules require municipalities to report annual Lake Michigan water usage. One of the reasons this is required is to reduce the amount of unaccounted for flow. Typically, Payless Park has maintained a low manageable number for this item. However, as our water main ages, the village needs to be more vigilant in its efforts to locate those locations where water is being lost through defects in the water mains, fittings, or fire hydrants. This year, Public Works would hit, would like to have the 26.8 miles of water pipe west of Lagrange Road surveyed for leaks, which is approximately 50% of our system. By being correct, we can stay ahead of ID and our requirements, and the village can reduce the cost by operating our water system. Even a small leak over time will result in a loss of revenue. Public Works requested proposals from three companies that worked in the area for our 2021 program. Two proposals were submitted. The first is from M.E. Simpson, who completed our last leak survey in 2020. Their all-inclusive cost was $5,925, the same price as last year. The second proposal was from Associated Technical Services, who typically does our emergency leak loadings. Their proposed all-inclusive cost was $6,653.79. This work was budgeted for and would be paid for from the water fund under our yearly maintenance items. Are there any questions from anyone regarding that? Because you would like to award the project to M.E. Simpson. If there aren't any questions, I'll just make a motion to approve the 2021 Water Main Leak Survey proposal from M.E. Simpson for the cost of $5,925.
Second. Hearing a motion in a second. Any further questions, comments? Yes, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Milosz Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, and motion carries.
Thank you. And I have no other items on the agenda, and no announcements, other than to say thank you to all the village staff and all the residents that came out for our National Hot Dog Day. And it was a large success. Straw dogs played, they sounded great. We had a lot of people out on the green, they brought their dogs. Thank you to Breakthrough Beverage for some donations, little gifts for all the dogs and other animals that came. And especially our, all our people that work here, Rick Baim on the grill. And.
And Chief.
And Chief. Chief was out there grilling and helping out with everything. But all the staff, thank you for your hard work, and I feel like it was a big success.
That's the second I'm going to see in most villages, a chief and a village manager working side by side on the grill.
We do know the winter run out a number of times to get more hot dogs and buns, because we didn't realize how wonderful the turnout would be. So hopefully, oh, and also, we did cancel our movie in the park over the weekend because of rain, so that is rescheduled for September 3rd, so it goes with that in the books as well, and it will be playing sand flat. And that concludes my report.
Thank you kindly. Building and public property report, Commissioner Reed. I want an introduction to Mike.
That's okay, one second. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. I was said, I was said, send to my appointment, actually, we'll take a lot of that. So, a building department report for this evening. If you hire landowners to work in your house this spring and summer, please remember that they need to be registered with the village. The two points contracting registration for them is to be filled out, certificate of assurance, certificate of assurance submitted, as well as registration fee paid. Thank you in advance for registering to work in the village. If you need assistance with the contracting registration process, please call 671-3733. The building department processed 38 permits from July 7th through August 3rd, resulting in $9,090 in permanent use. There were also 21 building inspections completed during this time period. This will year to date, $140,672.34. I also have another matter for your consideration this evening regarding the rules and charred Payless Park LLC, the Rules Restaurant. A request has been filed, requesting basically two variations from the original file, originally filed file. I don't want to the background history because it's there for you to read, however, in this instance, the two matters that are being requested, one of them is to change the style of the parking lot wiring fixture. The proposed fixture is dog sky certified and offers better controlled post spillover with directional source compared to the original light fixture. The second challenge that we'd like to make involves the solid stone fence between the building and the trash enclosure near the northwest corner of the project. They basically, she basically wants to change the style of the fence. Normally for residential matters, the code is static. When it comes to buildings or commercial buildings, the code is somewhat more fluid in that, well, Section 1274.05H allows minor changes to an approved plan to be approved by the village manager after reviewing the request made by the applicant. And this happens because as rules, we thought it best to not have the village manager make the final decision, although it is within his ability to do so. However, for interest of transparency, we wanted to make sure the council was apprised of any along changes that were affecting rules. This is a matter of course. Staff has reviewed the proposed amendments, and it has concluded that they are in fact minor amendments pursuant to the provisions of the code. Concept is not changing only the style of the light fixture and vectors of change. Staff has determined that the amendments are minor and are consistent with the conditions of the originally approved ordinance. If the council can concurs with the determination, a motion will be made to affect the changes that approved the ordinance. However, to make a motion, I will pause and text there any comments, remember that the doubt is.
Daryl, I just have one, I have no problem with this. I just was curious, because in the attachment, when it shows the lights fixtures, from what it was to what it's becoming, I just can't really like tell what the new one really kind of is going to look like, the picture itself. Did you get a better look, like a better picture? So, is it aesthetically pleasing? Is really my question?
I will answer that question by being real modest. I don't know.
Okay.
Okay? What I looked at and what I was told.
Yeah.
Was that the original structure was, was kind of inconsistent with the style.
Yeah.
That the applicant wanted.
Yeah.
And so the change was made to be more consistent with the style, because other than that, I don't believe there are any material changes, but I'll pause if there's someone there that actually has more information than I do.
Scott?
Yeah.
Oh, right, thank you. I just can't tell in the picture, it's hard to, hard to see what it's going to look like.
Could you give me my?
Yeah, on page 126, I think it's C14.
Right.
It kind of tries to depict what the older, like the newer and better look like.
Exactly what I'm looking at, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I'm old and I'm blind, so I couldn't tell that there was anything material, but you're a lot younger than I am, so your eagle eyes will probably be able to pick something up, and I would like to def.
The proposed fixture is more, more like a cylinder on top with more of an architectural flares coming down to the post.
Okay.
So the lights itself is really not visible, except from, from looking up, if you're looking up at the light from the ground.
Okay.
So from a distance, you really should not see the light source itself.
Oh, okay.
So, and the original one was more of an architectural bulb, you know.
Yeah, that I was able to tell like what that really looked like, and I just, this, it was just hard to tell.
Right, you know, and it was just more of the fact that with the newer lights, it was better to, you know, put cutoffs in the handle, so you're not going to get the glare or the bulb itself, because it's going to be more of a just down.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you for clarifying that, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it.
That sounds like Mr. Paul.
Correct.
Outstanding, outstanding, and it's ending here, we'll be out next. I would give the reminder comments for now, my motion to approve ordinance 2021-26 and ordinance number, ordinance number 21, 2019-16, adopted August 12, 2019, to allow for minor amendment for an approved commercial plan development in the B1 limited retail business district from 2300 South of Anger Road in 950 West 123rd Street.
Second.
I would seek a second.
I'll give you that second.
Any other questions? If not, I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Milosz Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you. That is all, except I would like to introduce you to the new director of our department, Mr. Mark Hamner. We are certainly glad to have him on board, and would like you all to extend a very warm and hearty welcome to the village of Payless Park, this one of our morale.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Public health and safety, Commissioner Polk.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. We'll start with the police activity report. Since we suspended the regularly scheduled July, second regularly scheduled live meeting, this covers a period of time from July 12th through August 8th, the year of our 2021. 3,776 calls for service, 80 education tickets, and additional six traffic tickets, 41 written warnings, 41 verbal warnings, 33 case reports, 15 accident reports, no juvenile or adult arrests, we did not impound anyone's vehicle, performed a number of senior checks as well as citizen assists. So that is what the Payless Park Police Department's been up to. I have a couple of just quick announcements. We're getting close to back to school season, so I'd like anyone who's interested to stop by the Payless Park Police Headquarters during normal business hours and get your supply of Payless Park Police Department pencils.
Say that five times.
Payless Park Police Department pencils. I don't see a number on them, but you know, they're somewhere around a two, and they've got erasers on them, and they come in different colors, and they're free if you come by and pick them up. Might even give you more than one. So again, normal business hours in the Department of Police Department. And I'd also like to remind people to take your time in the morning and the afternoon. They'll be back to school means sharing the road, especially early in the season. People aren't used to seeing the buses going through. Kids are, children are on bicycles or on foot trying to get to school. So slow down and pay attention when you see children are present. We'd also ask that people don't load or unload their children across a street from the school, and that the flashing lights on the school zones and school buses mean that children are there, and their safety comes first. And we'll be out making sure that you listen to all these things, and we might have a present for you if you don't. So again, have a great 2021 school year, and look for those buses and those children. Here's a program that we've been doing for a while that people were surprised that we actually did, so I thought maybe we ought to tell you that we do it. The Payless Park Public Library in partnership with Payless Park Police Department, You Are Not Alone program, provides delivery of library materials to participating Payless Park Library cardholders. So full library services are offered to those who are unable to come to the library either temporarily or permanently due to whatever reason. By calling the library, please don't call the police department and tell them that you want Mr. Clancy's latest novel. Call the library, you can request books, magazines, audiobooks, pretty much whatever the libraries got inside, you could request. And the library staff will arrange with the Payless Park Police Department to drop them off. I'd ask that you remember that you've asked the Payless Park Police Department to drop them off, so that when the Payless Park Police Department pulls into your driveway, you're ready to accept the items, because sometimes people get concerned. That does it for the police. I want to talk a little bit about public health and safety. We've talked a lot about coronavirus. I want to make a couple of quick comments. So we've all heard about this quote-unquote Delta variant. When it comes to naming things in science, we're either very clever or very straightforward. So the Delta variant is following the progression of the Greek alphabet. So that means that there's been an Alpha, there's been a Beta, there's been a Gamma, and now there's a Delta. Actually, we're up to well past Lambda right now. And the reason that these become important is because the variants are interesting for lots of different reasons. But remember that the virus needs a host to replicate out of. It doesn't just replicate on its own. It needs a living person to host it. And during that process of replication, it mutates. That's the way viruses survive, is by constantly mutating. So the fact that the coronavirus has mutated is of actual no surprise to anybody who knows anything about viruses. The issue is, what do the mutations lead to? And in the case of the Delta variant, it leads to a variant that's much more infectious, although it doesn't seem to be any more illness causing, other than it infects more numbers of people. So the severity of illness isn't really affected, but the number of people that are affected. What's the best way to keep the virus from mutating? Deny it a host. What's the best way to deny it a host? Class, Bueller, anyone? Get in, guys.
Maps, maps.
Yeah. People ask me all the time, what's the best immunization I can get? I say the one you can get in your arm the quickest. So there are. So there are pluses and minuses for all of them, they're all very effective at what they're meant to do. What they're meant to do is to keep your illness severity down, and keep you out of the hospital, and keep you out of the morgue. They're all very good at that. Don't get confused by the fact that one is 94% effective, or one is 96%, that those numbers really are meaningless to the way that the vaccines work. So if you're still on the fence about getting vaccinated, and you see what havoc the Delta variant is wreaking, think about getting immunized if you aren't already. And the next one on the horizon is Lambda, and we don't know enough about Lambda right now, but I can tell you one thing, when I hear people say, well, that came from wherever it came from, it's here. So there are already reports of this variant in the United States, in 44 out of the 50 states, so you'll be hearing about that next. Don't like these variants, don't want to hear about them anymore, get vaccinated, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for continuing to keep that in the forefront of our minds, that is very important.
Yeah, two, two other quick things, I think that the approvals for children under 12 will be, are in the imminent horizon, within a couple of weeks would be my guess, and the other thing I'm asked about all the time are boosters. I'm certain that boosters are on the horizon, I'm certain it won't be for another couple of months, that's all I have.
Excellent. Council finances report, Commissioner Valdez is not attending this evening. Oh, I guess, oh, of course, turn it over. I just wanted to note that we've received from the Government Finance Officers Association the indication that 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report qualifies for the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which we received for 20-some years, 22 years?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second year in a row, that's a major achievement, thank you Ella for your continued diligence and making sure that we qualify for that award. Includes Commissioner Valdez's report. Leads to my report. I've got one item on my agenda this evening, and that's an ordinance providing for acquisition of certain real estate. You've got a write-up in your packet, it's part of 12801 MacArthur Road, just a little background of history, as October 20th, October 12, 2020 meeting, the Village Council approved an agreement for land acquisition services to acquire the necessary easements to extend the planned 16-inch water main west of Bell Road. The Village currently has easements and right-of-way to extend its water main along MacArthur Road from just west of Walco Road to the centerline of Bell Road. The council said that the preferred route, at least the least expensive route, is to extend the main along MacArthur Road west of Bell Road, as opposed to using existing right-of-way to extend the water main north along Bell Road. To extend the water main along MacArthur Road west of Bell Road, four easements would need to be required, one is held by Cock Hill, who will furnish a necessary easement, one is owned by Common Head, and will need to be acquired through its process, and to her held by private ownership, 12801 MacArthur Road, 12895 MacArthur Road. Appraisals were completed, offers made to acquire the two easements held by the private parties, the private owner for 12801 MacArthur Road, never responded to the Village offer, and the offer for 12895 MacArthur Road was rejected with no counteroffer made. Village's right-of-way consultant may be following their condition, I believe it is in the best interest of the Village to commence with condemnation proceedings for this parcel. Village attorneys have drafted ordinance that laws for final offer to acquire the property to be made, failing to reach agreement and compensation for the ordinance, drives, plans, or documents are attorneys to acquire the property through eminent domain proceedings to acquire a permit and temporary utility easements for the Village. Does anyone have any questions regarding this ordinance?
There actually are two ordinances, one for each address. The, the agenda, the third page of the agenda is the second ordinance, so they each have to be approved separately.
Okay. Obviously enough, I like duplicates in my pack. So the first is for 12801 MacArthur Road, again, there's two par, two parcels that are owned by private parcels, and at this point, I would seek a motion to approve ordinance 2021-23 in ordinance providing for the acquisition of certain real estate currently owned as a part of 12801 MacArthur Road, owned through eminent domain or otherwise.
Salute.
Second.
Hearing your motion in a second, will the clerk please call the law?
Commissioner Cole.
Yes.
Commissioner Muller, Walter.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries. Second item is to approve ordinance 2021, I would have a secret motion to approve ordinance 2021-24 in ordinance providing for the acquisition of certain real estate currently owned as a part of 12895 MacArthur Road, owned through eminent domain or otherwise.
Salute.
Second.
Hearing your motion in a second, will the clerk please call the law?
Commissioner Cole.
Yes.
Commissioner Cole, yes. Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you for consideration of those matters. For everyone in the evening this evening.
I have one this evening.
Manager, being, is not here this evening, so he has not reported. Announcements, a couple here. The zoning board appeals meeting is canceled for August 11th, historic preservation committee will not be on August 17th, as there are no agendas. The library board will have their regular meeting on Wednesday, July 18th, I guess that's August 18th.
That is correct.
August 18th at 5:00 p.m. The Dallas Fine Arts Committee will meet on Thursday, August 19th at 4:00 p.m. at the preparation center, and the plant commission will not be on Thursday, August 19th, as there are no agenda items. A little thank you to the Garden Guild, thank you to Garden Guild one members for planning and maintaining the beautiful Potina Gardens and Metro Station. Garden Guild one has done this for several years in early presence of the Edge and Stewart Station, thank you. The center is having a Roman sale the weekend of August 27th, Friday through Sunday, from 8:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. After Monday, August 16th, they will be accepting sellable donations. Please contact the center at 708-361-3650 for more information on this great event. And that includes my announcement, citizens and visitors of the county, anyone in the audience like to try this, this is the council at this time.
Only thing I want to say is to remind everyone, August 17th and 8th, and September 17th and 18th is Autumn in the Park, but on calendar, the Beetle Fong Circus, Mike and Joe, we're going to have a lot of fun, parade and barbecue, and kind of back to what we had a couple years ago, so to put it on the calendar.
Thank you. So anyone in the audience like to investigate this or those such requests, I would see the motion.
Salute.
Second.
Hearing your motion in a second, will the clerk please call the law?
Commissioner Cole.
Yep.
Commissioner Cole, yes.
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries, thank you all for your time and good evening.
You're safe.